This is the very fifth addition of the Parker Town Council meeting. I'm going to reconvene our meeting at 7:03 PM. Council, if you could all please sign in. All council members are present with the exception of Councilwoman Amy Holland and Councilwoman Debbie Lewis. Before we get to our first item on the agenda, if you guys could just join me for a sec, in case you haven't heard, this evening several sheriff's deputies from El Paso County were unfortunately killed in Colorado Springs. So if we could just have a quick moment of silence for them and their families, I would just greatly appreciate it. Thank you very much for that. If you please keep them and their families and everyone affected in your prayers, I'd really appreciate that. To start off the evening, our first item, which is our most important item, is our pledge of allegiance. And we are honored to be joined by PAC 396, who is going to lead us in our ceremony tonight. So gentlemen, the floor is yours. All of these people are going to wait and listen to what you tell them to do.
No reason to be there.
Color guard, attention. Audience, please rise. Steps, loop, those on units four, please place your right hand over your heart. Color guard, forward march. Color guard, halt. Color guard, cross the colors. Please, Detective, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two. Color guard, post the flag of the United States of America. Color guard, play. Color guard, post the flag of the great state of Colorado. Color guard, honor your colors. Color guard, return to ranks. Audience, please.
Fantastic. Gentlemen, you guys were awesome tonight. Way to go. So before we move into the rest of our meeting, you guys might not realize that tonight, not only did you get to have this super awesome flag ceremony done by PAC 396, but everyone in this room is joined by a celebrity. Do you guys know that? There is a superstar in this portion of the room. Now everyone's looking back going, wait a minute, the Legend kids are sitting back here and they're, you all think you're superstars, right? But I can tell you from experience, there is only one professional nutcracker in this room. And Tyler, would you stand up? He played the nutcracker in The Nutcracker of Parker this year. So if you guys came out to The Nutcracker of Parker and saw the big costume on, that was him in that. Now before that, he was my size and he sweated it all off to that size because that costume was so hot, right? No, but he's probably really mad at me now for embarrassing him, but that's kind of my job to do. So there we go. All right, next up, we've got special presentations. Do we have any special presentations tonight, Michelle? Okay, then we're going to go ahead and move on. I know our next update's Parker Chamber of Commerce and Downtown Business Alliance. Dennis texted me that he is not going to be here tonight because he's at the state chamber of commerce con- something or other tonight, so he's not available. But I do know we have two lovely ladies from the DBA here tonight, so I'm assuming we're going to get an update from the Downtown Business Alliance.
My name is Shelley Mango. Good evening. Thank you for having us, Town Council. And I'll introduce, let you introduce yourself.
And my name is... ...so volunteered to be one of our committee chairs for our Downtown Business Alliance. So since our last update, we've had one membership meeting and we've also had a board meeting. We have nine members of our board, lots of big decisions being made in those board meetings. From these meetings, we've established four committees that will be very productive and very action oriented this year. Those four committees are our fundraising events committee that will be handling ideas such as Taste of Parker perhaps might be a really cool event to have downtown, or maybe a throw down chef contest or something like that. So there's a committee that's working on their ideas for 2018 right now, the fundraising event committee. We have a marketing committee. Currently, they are focused on our website, downtownparker.com, should be coming in March. We're very excited to have downtownparker.com that will feed into all the many calendars. It'll be a primary calendar. Feeding into this calendar, so should be a really good wealth of information. We have a government action committee. Their goal is to work on improvements for downtown Parker. And then we are very pleased to have the Parker Creative District Committee folding in to our DBA. And that is being chaired by Teresa from Victoria Marie. This group will continue their focus on adding and supporting artistic events or additions to our downtown area, and we're very pleased to have that committee be folded in. Each committee has a lead established and several members, and they're all turning in their 2018 action plan and budgets if necessary within the next few weeks. So we should have lots of good information next month for you to, to share what everyone's planning on doing. Any questions?
Council, questions? Nope? Keep up the good work.
Well done.
Thank you.
Yep, absolutely. All right, next item is public comment. This is an opportunity for you to come and address council on items that are not currently on our agenda. If you're here for an agenda item, there'll be public comment at the time of that item. So this is for general public comment. No action will be taken on these items. There's a three minute time limit. You'll notice above me, there's a little three minute clock. I've got one across the way behind you there. When you come up, you'll state your name and address for the record, and then the timer will start, and it's an opportunity, like I said, for you to give comment on anything you'd like that's not on our agenda. So with that, we'll open up general public comment at 7:11 PM. And seeing nothing, I thought there'd be at least a couple Legend kids coming. No? All right, then we're going to close public comment at 7:12 PM, move on to reports, items, and comments from mayor and council. Let's start with Mr. Martin.
Just a couple things. It is kind of one of my last remaining duties with serving on the board for E470, we're finishing up the executive director review there. And that was really probably the biggest thing since our last meeting, so.
Josh?
First of all, thank you to Martin for running an excellent board and your work with E470. It's outstanding what you've done. Last week, I had the honor of attending Legend High School Unified Basketball Team, or game versus Parker PD. It was outstanding showing. I cannot believe the support the student base put on for that game. Amazing. PD did a good job, but not good enough. He fell again.
Yeah, they got skunked.
Just got skunked again. I don't know what they were doing out there, but yeah, so it was an honor to represent the town and truly an honor to watch such a great game. You guys' support of your entire student base is fantastic, truly. And then I have to, it's my son's 11th birthday today, and I promised him I would say happy birthday, so happy birthday, kiddo.
Nice, nice. Is he watching on the live stream right now?
Said he would, I doubt it though.
He said? I was going to have us sing happy birthday to him if he was watching, but.
Renee?
I attended a couple of chamber events, the Women in Business and Leadership and the Economic Forecast Breakfast. And then I've had a lot of liaison meetings for P3, the Town Administrator, HR, and Parks and Rec, Douglas County Transit Solutions Meeting, the Town's Big Picture Meeting, and we did a ton of interviews for the Liquor License Authority. That wraps it up.
All right, Mr. Dyak?
All right, thank you, Mayor. Let's see, I had a Dr. Cog meeting. The only thing of note there was we were talking about federal dollars, and it looks like we're going to have the opportunity to get more at a local level, which is good news. I had a Walmart retention visit. Walmart seems to think that everything's going fantastic, and they're getting more and more online sales. And transitioning into Councilmember Martin's role, I had an event with Executive Director of E470, Tim Stewart, to celebrate his presidency to IBTTA. And I honestly don't know, Councilmember Martin, what that acronym is for.
International Bridge Tunnel and Turnpike Association.
Ooh, there will be a test on that, guys, so make sure you wrote that down.
No, it's really a thing, honestly. It doesn't seem like it's a thing, but it's a thing.
It is. And I had a brief visit with Executive Director today to go over some things, obviously not what IBTTA is. And to honor my birth town and my father, who was a season ticket holder for over 20 years, congratulations, Philadelphia Eagles, it's about time.
And did you go light a trash can on fire after the win?
I was on Main Street, I couldn't find a trash can.
Couldn't find a trash can to light on fire, so.
It was Shelley.
Yeah, it was not the one with Shelley, that one. Well, it was for sure, whether you liked the Patriots or you liked the Eagles or whatever, it was a fantastic, fantastic football game, that was for darn sure. I don't have much to report. I was out of town last week for my dad's 70th birthday. He lives down in Albuquerque, and for a lot of you in the room who helped me participate in his birthday, I asked friends and people I know and people I don't know. My dad is a retired Marine, a retired, he's a district governor for Rotary, he served elected office in Albuquerque, very kind of humble dude, doesn't like a lot of attention, but 70 is a kind of a big deal, so I asked people to write birthday cards for him, even though they didn't know him. And I was pretty cool to get to take my dad over 120 birthday cards from all over the world. I had one from Germany, one from New Zealand, a whole bunch from Parker. There was a couple of the kindergarten classes made big cards for my dad, and it was really cool to get to do that and watch him go through them and see him. So for those of you in the room who participated and brought cards in for my pop, I really appreciate it and know that there's an old scraggly dude in Albuquerque who really appreciates your support. So, all right, with that, we'll move on to item number seven. This is our consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine, and they'll be enacted with one motion and one vote unless there's a council member who asks to have something removed for further discussion. So council, I would entertain either further discussion or a motion on consent agenda item 7A through 7N.
So move. Second? Motion by Josh Rivero, second by Josh Martin. Council, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. For our friends from Legend, if you'll notice on the board when the lights went on, you didn't see the light next to Wade, me, go on. Can you guys guess why? Is it because my thumb's broken, or because I want to avoid my duties and not vote on stuff? No, it's because in Parker, the mayor doesn't get to vote on things. So that, look, all the heads went down as they wrote down that note, a cool fact to turn into their teacher, that the mayor doesn't get to vote on things. In Parker, the mayor only gets to vote if there's a tie, and the only other power I have is veto if these guys get all nutty and do something crazy. But on normal items, the mayor doesn't vote, so there's a little piece for you there. Town administrators' report. Michelle, do you have anything to add?
No, I do not tonight.
All right. If you haven't been to one of our meetings before, welcome. If you're watching on live stream, we have our, Michelle has our Town Administrators' Report online at parkeronline.org. It's updated quarterly. It's a fantastic document to go to to see what's going on around town, facts and figures, numbers, all that, all sorts of cool stuff there. So definitely check it out. Go ahead and move to our next item, which is item number nine, public hearings. The first item we have, 9A, is a public hearing for Keim Ranch Annexation. This is for resolution number 18-013, a resolution to set forth Town Council's finding of fact and conclusions as the eligibility of the Keim Ranch property for annexation into the Town of Parker. And let's see, Paul, you're going to be working this?
That's correct.
All right, rock and roll. I just thought you were here to raise the beard quotient of staff today.
I do everything I can, Mr. Mayor.
I mean, sitting next to you, you know, just saying, all right, come on, dude.
One of us is not like the others.
Yeah, exactly.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of Town Council. As was just alluded to, your first public hearing this evening is resolution number 18-013. It is a finding of fact and conclusion for the eligibility of the Keim Ranch property for annexation. Please note that the files indicate that the proceedings this evening have been posted in accordance with the requirements. There are two properties that are requesting, that have submitted their annexation petition this evening. In total, it's about 17 plus or minus acres located just north of Main Street and north and west of Crestone Needles Drive, again, to the north and west of the Willow Ridge Development. The west parcel is currently undeveloped and owned by the Elizabeth M. L. Keim Living Trust, is owned rural residential in the county. The parcel on the east is developed with a single family home. It is currently owned by the Rybolt Family Trust and is owned large rural residential in the county. Both of the properties are designated for medium density residential development within the town's master plan. So this evening, before Town Council, is the annexation petition. The applicants, the Elizabeth M. L. Keim Living Trust and the Rybolt Family Trust, have submitted this annexation petition in order to request that the town annex their property into town. The annexation petition is the first step in the annexation process. It's a requirement of state law to submit that to the potentially annexing municipality. Within that annexation petition, there are 10 criteria that the state law outlines that must be satisfied with that petition. The proceedings this evening are to determine whether or not the annexation petition meets those 10 criteria. Approval of the recommended motion this evening would not annex the property into the town. Instead, it will determine that the property is eligible for annexation and set a public hearing date of August 20th for annexation consideration. As previously alluded to, these are the 10 criteria for annexation petition. Staff will not go through each of these individually, however they are technical and generally non-discretionary in nature. Things like at least one-sixth or 16% of the property is contiguous with the existing boundaries of the town. Per the annexation map that's been submitted, the subject properties are 46, 49% contiguous with the town. That the town boundaries will not be extended by three miles. These properties are not big enough to extend town boundaries for three miles. And things like the town has a plan for the future development, which the town master plan does contemplate this property being annexed by the town and consistent with our single family density residential development. With that, staff is recommending that Town Council approve the recommended motion to approve resolution number 18-013 and set the annexation hearing for August 20th, 2018. That would conclude staff's brief presentation, however, we certainly are available for any questions you all may have.
Council, do you have any questions for Paul? Nope, none? All right, since it's a public hearing, we'll open it up for public comment at 7:22 PM. If there's anyone here wishing to address council.
Mr. Workman, are we going to hear from the applicant?
The applicant is present.
Oh. I apologize. How could I skip you sitting there smiling up at me? Please, come on forward if you would state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Town Council. My name is Allison Altaris. I am legal counsel to the applicant, Brookfield Residential. I'm with Otten Johnson Robinson Neffen Raginetti in Denver, Colorado, and our firm's address is 950 Seventeenth Street, Suite 1600, Denver, Colorado 80202. I also want to introduce Shannon Robbins, who is the Vice President of Acquisitions and Entitlements for Brookfield, who is here on behalf of the applicant as well.
I apologize for skipping your presentation.
No apology necessary. So before I move on, on behalf of the entire project team, which also includes Redland and Norris Design, I want to thank Paul, Jim, Town Staff for their work on the applications up to this point. The project team has been working very closely with Town Staff and has received a lot of valuable input and direction from them at this very early stage in the project. Just to give a very brief description of the project, which you'll be hearing more about in the coming months, the proposed project includes annexation of the two parcels that Paul mentioned into the town and the zoning and development of the overall property into an approximately 170 unit, single-family residential neighborhood. The project property is located along Main Street between the Parker Vista Neighborhood to the west and the Sunset Ridge Neighborhood to the east. The majority of the property is already within the town and is owned by Ginger Keim and her family. There are two smaller parcels to be annexed into the town that are situated to the north and the east of the Keim property that fronts Main Street, one of which is owned by the Keim family and the other of which is owned by the Rybolt family. We're here tonight for an eligibility hearing on the annexation, the annexation portion of the application only. This is not a hearing on the actual annexation zoning or any of the other project approvals. We'll go to Planning Commission, and then assuming that council grants our request for approval of the resolution tonight, the annexation zoning and potentially other portions of the application come back to Town Council on August 20th. For purposes of complying with the state constitution and the Municipal Annexation Act, what we're asking for tonight is that council adopt a resolution confirming that the subject properties are eligible to be annexed into the town. This is a necessary step in the annexation process and is really just a procedural formality. You have a copy of the annexation petition and map in your packets. The annexation petition recites the criteria, as Paul mentioned, that makes the property eligible to be annexed into the town, so I won't go over those again in detail. But if anyone has any questions about the property's eligibility to be annexed, I'm happy to respond to those questions. So in closing, the project team is very excited to bring this new and exciting neighborhood to the Town of Parker. We look forward to working with staff in the coming months to refine the project before we come back to you on August 20th for a public hearing. So for now, I would respectfully request that council adopt resolution number 18-013, and thank you all for your time. Happy to answer any questions.
Council, do you have any questions? Nope? John?
Looks like you had one.
No? All right, thank you very much, and I apologize again for jumping the gun on that. All right, now we'll open up public comment for 7:00, at 7:25 PM, on any public wishing to give comment on resolution number 18-013, which is the Town Council's finding of fact in regards to annexation. Come on down. So if you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Dennis Fields. I live at 11053 North Thrush Drive, Parker, Colorado. Mayor, members of the Town Council, we have a problem. The problem is urban sprawl. The character of the Town of Parker is disappearing. The Town of Parker has always taken pride in its rural atmosphere, its open space, its horses, its deer, and wildlife. It is why we live here. Now there's a decision before us to annex a small strip of land from Douglas County. This request for annexation is being done, we believe, at the behest of a developer whose intent and sole purpose is to take that pristine land and cover it with concrete and asphalt, to eradicate the wildlife that has used it for millennia. We are the citizens of Pine Valley Subdivision on the north boundary of the proposed development. We have seen their housing plan, and it is inconsistent. We have lived there, in most cases, for decades. Developer intends to build a wall of high-density housing that is completely incompatible with the horse properties on which we reside. We heard from the developer that a traffic study has been done. Well, it doesn't take a brain surgeon to know that the result of the study, the traffic will be worse. All traffic east of here funnels onto Main, East Main Street, then veers northward onto Pine Drive. The traffic on these two main arteries are already bad, and this development of 150 houses will make it worse. Numerous serious and lethal car accidents have already occurred at Lincoln and Pine Drive. Has a wildlife impact study been done? I can already tell you what will happen to the wildlife. It will vanish. It is within your power to stop this encroachment, and I urge you to vote no on this annexation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else for public comment? This is the time to come on down? All right, and seeing none, we'll close public comment at 7:28 PM. And council, do you have any further questions on this item?
Just the two neighborhoods on either side, Paul, the density will be comparable to those two neighborhoods?
Comparable, that's correct.
And they're at, do you happen to know? No, not a fan. They're a traditional single-family detached residential neighborhood, which is consistent with the town master plan at 3.5 dwellings per acre.
That's the number I wanted here, thank you.
Okay. John?
And thank you. Councilmember Martin, or I'm sorry, Rivero, kind of addressed my first question, I guess second question. Is this a deficit reduction fee eligible annexation? I think that's Jim Maloney?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, council? Okay, then I would entertain a motion, please.
And then, Mayor, just for the record, just so we're clear, tonight's approval, if there is one...
Right, it's not for an annexation. Right.
I move to approve resolution number 18-013 and set annexation ordinance hearing on August the 20th, 2018.
Second?
Motion by Josh Rivero and a second by Renee. Council, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. For our kids in the audience, what you just heard was before, there's often confusion about what annexation is and what another thing called eminent domain is. You guys have probably heard both of those terms. Eminent domain is kind of like you guys having to go to school. Like, you have to, you have no choice, right? So eminent domain is when a government comes and takes someone's private property for the common good, right? There's a process, legal process, that has to go through. Annexation is not like that. Annexation's like going to prom, okay? Both parties have to agree to it, or it doesn't happen, right? So, like, I usually say it's like marriage, but you guys will get the prom thing probably a little bit better. So the town doesn't go and annex a property if the property owner doesn't want it, and the property owner, if they want to come into the town and the town doesn't want them, doesn't have to take them in. So this is the first step in a process to determine, is this, is this date eligible to go to prom with me, right? And if that date's not eligible to go to prom, then the whole deal's off, right? So what was determined tonight is that this property is eligible for annexation. Now theoretically, the property owner could decide, yeah, I don't want to go to prom with the Town of Parker and go a different direction, or they could say, I hear the Town of Parker's a pretty good dancer, I think I do want to go to prom with them, right? But that's the next step in the hearing process. Makes sense? All right, cool. All right, next item up is item B. This is a public hearing for Parker Keystone Amendment Number Two Minor Development Plat, and it was continued from January 2nd, 2018. And Ryan, you're going to be up. One of these days, I'm going to buy you like a fake beard to wear when you come to this.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Happy New Year too, this is the first time seeing you, so happy new year. So this is the Town Council Public Hearing for the Parker Keystone Amendment Number Two Minor Development Plat. So this site is located on the southeast corner of Parker Road and Lincoln Avenue. Lot 2 of the subdivision is currently under construction, as probably many of you have observed, with a multi-tenant retail building right now. The minor development plat has been submitted in order to accomplish these three things. It's going to combine Lot 1 of the Parker Keystone subdivision with Lot 2, Block 1 of the Parker Heights subdivision for future commercial development. Lot 2, Block 1 of Parker Heights subdivision has never been platted in the Town of Parker, so that's why it's being heard tonight by Town Council. It will remove and vacate unnecessary utility easements, and it will realign a shared access easement at the northwest corner of the property to accommodate additional landscaping and signage. So this slide is a close-up detail of what this minor development plat is going to do. The green dotted line represents the current Parker Keystone Lot 1 property boundary. That green dotted line will be vacated and... That green dotted line will be vacated, and a new Lot One, as shown in red, will be created to accommodate a future commercial development. Two utility easements within the newly created lot will be vacated to accommodate a future development as well. It also shows a public access easement on the northwest corner of the site, being shifted slightly south and east to accommodate a freestanding sign and landscaping. Along with this minor development plat is the First Amendment to the Parker Keystone Filing Number One subdivision agreement. That SIA amendment will include the newly enlarged Lot One and makes it subject to the conditions of the original SIA. So staff has reviewed this request against the requirements of the PD zoning designation and land development ordinance requirements, and has determined that it meets all those requirements. Our referral agencies have responded with either no comment or advisory comments, excuse me, and to date, staff has not been contacted by anyone from the public concerning this request. So this application was public notice correctly with signage and mailings. On January 11th of 2018, Planning Commission recommended that the council approve this minor development plat, and staff is recommending approval of the minor development plat, subject to the conditions in staff memo. The applicant, Greg Armstrong, as well as Kathy Sorensen from Armstrong Capital Development are here this evening. They do not have a presentation, but they are available for questions if Town Council members have any, but I'll be happy to answer any questions right now. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Okay. Ryan, thank you very much. Counsel, do you have any questions for Ryan?
Nope.
Since Mr. Armstrong's here, do you guys have any questions for him?
You like easements, don't you?
You like easements. He has, he's getting a tattoo of those easements on his back after, you know, they're all done with this. All right, excellent. Well, it is a public hearing, so we'll open it up for public comment at 7:35 PM if there's anyone here wishing to address Counsel on this item. All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment at 7:35 PM, and I'll entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
I move to approve the Parker Keystone Minor Development Amendment Number Two, MDP, based on staff findings with the conditions contained in the staff report.
Second.
Motion by John and a second by Josh. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Legend kids, what just happened was an amendment to a plat. A plat isn't probably a word that you usually hear very often. You've probably heard things like plot and stuff like that. A plat is just a legal document that says, this is kind of the legal definition of the area, all right? And so what happened in this was taking two, an old piece, an old easement line, and getting rid of it and combining it with the other one to give a better legal definition of where Mr. Armstrong's land is on that. It's not very, you know, exciting or anything. I was trying to think of a good high school analogy for it, couldn't come up with one. So that's the best you're gonna get. All right.
Excuse me, Mayor, before we move off of this item, there was a second motion that needed to be entertained.
Oh, thank you very much. I didn't see a, oh yeah, number two, the First Amendment.
Sorry, I moved. It was like, yeah.
Yep, I don't have the whole.
They gotta move back on their packets.
Do you want to read the motion out loud?
I'm getting, hold on.
So the second motion is, I move to approve the First Amendment to subdivision agreement, Parker Keystone filing number one, First Amendment, based on staff findings.
So moved.
Second.
All right, a motion by Josh and a second by Josh. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. We're trying to go paperless up here, so everyone's got their computers up and they just scrolled right past it, and then it takes 20 minutes to get back to it, all right? So, all right, now, next item. We good, Jim?
Yes, sir.
All right, next item is Item Number 10, Resolutions. This is for Resolution Number 18-009. This is a resolution approving the 71.5-acre Harvey Open Space Conceptual Plan dated November 13th, 2017. Mr. Trapp!
How are you?
I'm doing well. How are you doing, buddy?
Did you notice a beard?
I did. It's a defining...
It's a little gray.
That's all right. That's a little, that's a little flavor. It's a little flavor right there.
Exactly, exactly. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of Council. As you said, the item tonight before you is a resolution adopting the Harvey Property Open Space Conceptual Plan. Several months ago, we briefed Council at a study session, so I think you're somewhat familiar with the property, so I'll go through this pretty quickly and then we can entertain any questions or comments. The property is located, as you can see up here, off of Main Street, the north side of Main Street, right across from Canterbury Parkway intersection. The site's about 71 acres. It's bordered on the west by Quail Creek Residential Community, on the south by Main Street and Canterbury, on the north by Homestead Hills, and then on the east by Pope Road. Pope Road is actually in the county. In fact, the property is still within the county right now. We haven't gone through our annexation zoning and plating yet. That will be something that will occur over the next several months with Paul's help Mr. Harvey has owned the prop, or owned the property for a number of years. In 1996, he put the property in a life estate with a conservation easement. The conservation easement, he felt very strongly about preserving the open space values of the property while still allowing some passive activities on the site that would benefit the site but also preserve the open space values. With regards to the particular piece of property here, when Mr. Harvey passed away in 2010, that life estate passed the property directly on to Douglas County. The conservation easement was and is still held by Douglas Land Conservancy, an independent third party that's operated here in Douglas County for decades. They basically oversee any issues related to the property from a management standpoint in perpetuity, quite honestly. When the county acquired the property after Mr. Harvey's death, they had it for several years, and then they came to the town and asked us if we would be interested in acquiring the property, basically giving the property to us. We briefed Council at that. The maximum amount of vehicles would be 20 vehicles, again, soft-surface gravel parking lot. Fencing is allowed, smooth wire fencing as necessary around the perimeter, interpretive signage for identification, educational purposes, those kinds of things. There can also be a project ID sign, and Mr. Harvey stipulated that that sign would say Ray J. Harvey Park. So at some point in the future, when we think about naming this, that's already been taken care of, and we'll have no discussions, and we'll get the sign up, hopefully. The conservation easement also allowed one restroom, and that restroom is located, if you look at the, kind of the blow-up of the parking lot in the lower right-hand corner there, you can see that kind of reddish color square. That's basically a vault restroom, almost identical to what we did at the dog park. The other thing that we're exploring here, and this relates a little bit to, I digress, but our most recent Parks and Rec master plan and some of the feedback we got from citizens about, one, wanting restrooms at parks, so obviously that was included as part of this conceptual plan, but the other thing was drinking fountains. So we are exploring also, in addition to the restroom, having a drinking fountain somewhere near that vault restroom for people that hike on the site or go out to use the site for various purposes, so kind of keep that in mind. When we completed this plan, we had an open house back in November of last year. We sent out notices to over 400 addresses, and that included pretty much all the properties that surround this site, to the north, to the west, to the south, and even on the other side of Pope Road. The open house was attended by about 40 people. We had really, really good feedback. The open house was really valuable for us because until the people actually saw the plan, I think they had some different ideas of what was happening. We heard all sorts of rumors for it was gonna be developed with homes and this and that. So part of it was an educational process, and once we indicated that there is a conservation easement on the property that spells out very specifically what can and can't happen, and the plan was designed based upon that, I think people started to warm up to that aspect of the plan. There is also on the plan, because soft-surface trails are allowed, there's a hierarchy of trails, six-foot crusher fine trail that really encircles the whole property. It's about two and a half kilometers in length, so if you walked or ran that twice, it's about a 5K length. Then there's also four-foot wide trails. Those are pretty minimal. They allow two-way traffic, again, soft surface, and then also two-foot wide trails, which is like a single-track trail. So we've kind of provided a hierarchy, and that was one of our goals. So there's, there's different types of users when they come, whether they want to walk, jog, stroll, or whatever. Along those trails, there's a number of rest areas for shelters, interpretive signage. The old farmstead will have some historic signage that recognizes the farmstead that Mr. Harvey had up in that location that's kind of on the western side of the property. One of the, or several of the comments that came out of the public open house that are reflected on this plan, and that was, we initially had the loop trail system a little closer to the west side of the property and the north side of the property. Some of the feedback we got from the open house is they wanted that trail kind of pushed back from those residential areas. So the trail that you see now up in kind of that northwest corner is probably 3 to 350 feet away from the property line, Quail Creek Homes in that area. So that was one of the bits of feedback that we got that we incorporated into the plan that you, that you see tonight. The plan was also reviewed in December of last year by Douglas Land Conservancy, and we had been working with them four months, quite honestly, before we got to the point of taking this to their board, and they unanimously approved the plan that you see tonight and indicated that it was consistent with the purpose and intent of the original conservation easement. So with that, I'll conclude my presentation. I'll turn it back over to the Mayor and Counsel for comments and questions.
Counsel, do you have any questions?
What about bicycles and equestrian?
The conservation easement actually does allow equestrian use. We have not encouraged that, but it could certainly happen onsite. The parking lot is designed such that it would be somewhat problematic for equestrian trailers, but you could do that. As far as bicycles, those would also be allowed. You're probably thinking dirt bikes or cyclocross bikes or those kinds of things. Those kinds of activities within the conservation easement are considered kind of passive uses on the site.
And just to clarify, when you say dirt bike, non-motorized, so like a mountain bike?
Correct.
Okay, 'cause I'm sure, right now, I felt Facebook land, people going, oh yeah, they're gonna put motorcycles on.
Motorized vehicles are prohibited.
No motorized, okay, gotcha. Josh, Martin?
No, I just, I know, we first started talking about this, I don't know, three or four years ago.
That's correct.
It's been an ongoing thing, and I just, I like that, you know, you guys working in step with the Douglas County Land Conservancy just to make sure that, that Mr. Harvey's wishes for the property were, were respected and, you know, all the Ts got crossed and Is dotted. So I, I think it's, I think it's great, I think it's, it's good that folks can use it at least to a certain point.
And he had an amazing amount of foresight in regards to this property and what he hoped to see it become in the future, so.
John?
Yeah, Dennis, is, is there a place where we can educate and inform the public about who Mr. Harvey is, why he did this, just to preserve his legacy?
Sure, and that actually, we can actually dig out some of that information. I've done a little bit of research. I did not know him personally. Some folks in Douglas County did know him personally. The woman that oversees the Douglas Land Conservancy, Patty Hostedler, she knew him personally, so we've had some of those conversations. In addition, we have searched out some local residents that were part of the homestead that lived on this site and dealt with Mr. Harvey. So we're gonna do some more research in that vein, and signage as far as the homestead and Mr. Harvey, those are things that we hope to incorporate on the site.
Great, thank you, Dennis.
Only a question I have is just in regards to moving the trail farther east from that, the west side of it. Was that input, do you think that that input from the homeowners back there was mainly because they had a fear of people parking on the residential street and then kind of cutting across to join the trail that close, or do they just not want activity near the homes?
I, I think it was a combination of both. There was a concern that if the trails were close to the existing residential, and if the fencing wasn't continuous, that cars could park within that residential neighborhood and people could walk onto the site. So that was, that was one aspect of it. Another one was a little bit of, I'll call it, the disturbance factor. The homes that are on the west side that back up to the Harvey property, obviously this site has been natural open space for a number of years, so they were a little bit concerned about trail, trail activity, people out there walking around. So we took that into consideration and made some adjustments and just moved the trail a little further away from those residential areas.
Okay. All right, kudos to you guys for taking so much public input on it, that's great. All right, well, without any other questions, we'll open it up for public comment at...
I just want to make a statement, I think this is a great example. Can you go back to the drone shot, just for the students?
The drone?
So if you look farther up on the shot, you can see an open space up there. That's the piece that we just allowed to be annexed in, in August, and this is a great example of private property rights. So those pieces want to sell their property to be developed to similar-sized housing, whereas this gentleman, Mr. Harvey, decided to not sell his property. Again, it's up to the owner of the property. The town doesn't come in and say, you can do this, you have to do this, we want this, we want that. The citizens who own these parcels decide what they want to do with their parcels. We just make sure they do it the correct way and legally. That's it.
Okay, cool. We'll open it up for public comment at 7:51 PM if there's anyone here to address Counsel on this item.
Civics 101.
All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment at 7:51, and I'll entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
I move to approve Resolution Number 18-009.
Second.
Motion by Josh and a second by Renee. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is Item 11A. This is ordinance number 1.447.1 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to repeal Chapter 2.09 of the Parker Municipal Code concerning the Parker Creative District. Elaine?
Hello.
Or is yours?
Thank you, Mayor. Elaine Mariner, Cultural Director for the Town of Parker, and the ordinance in front of you is actually, or the, the request in front of you is to repeal the ordinance that established the Creative District originally in 2012, and as you heard earlier from Shelley Mango, the President of the DBA, it's now, now time for the Downtown Business Alliance, now that it's a nonprofit organization, to fold the activities that were formerly taken care of by the town into the activities of the Downtown Business Alliance, in accordance with what the town's interests are, ensuring that it's a destination for art, culture, and creative activity. So by repealing this ordinance, it kind of frees the way for the Downtown Business Alliance to kind of take over those, those activities.
Okay, thank you very much. Counsel, do you have any questions? Okay, we'll open it up for public comment at 7:53. Seeing none, we'll close public comment at 7:53, and I'll entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
I move to approve ordinance number 1.447.1 on second reading.
Second.
Motion by Josh and a second by John. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item, which is 11B, this is ordinance number 5.74.1 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to amend Sections 6.06.070 and 6.06.080 of the Parker Municipal Code concerning the restriction of open fires, open burning, and fireworks in the town of Parker during certain fire conditions. Doreen, are you gonna lead us tonight, or your name's on the chart here?
I think you're gonna reach out.
Well, we need a presentation. You gonna come give us our presentation, or is Jim, Jim, you gonna do it? It says Doreen!
We got nothing.
She's got a smack, Chief King, or, yeah, your name's on it. Come on down, tell us. You look very nice. Come tell us about ordinance number 5.74.1 on second reading.
Did you want to assist with this?
Do you want to assist with this? She has a firearm and she knows how to use it, so...
I'll come down and stand next to her, so...
Okay, just basically, and also for the, for the knowledge of our legend high school kids, 'cause right now when they heard the word fireworks, they're probably like, great, Parker Heights fun, and we're getting rid of fireworks, and that's not what it is.
So this is specific to the commercial fireworks displays, that if it goes under certain fire bans, the commercial show would have to be canceled, so now there's additional provisions in there, that if approved by the emergency manager and South Metro Fire, and we can add additional fire suppression equipment and additional fire apparatus that... fire apparatus, that we would be able to continue with our commercial fireworks show, instead of canceled.
Very well stated, that was fantastic. Counsel, do you have any questions? Nope. All right.
I know that, uh, Kevin Malone was here last time when he read it on, uh, he's not now, on Cosent Agenda, and he just wanted to know if we had chatted with them, and obviously we have, and that's all kosher and perfect.
Yep. All right, we'll open it up for public comment at 7:55. Does anyone here want to talk about open burning and fireworks? Seeing none, we'll close public comment at 7:55, and I'll entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
I move to approve ordinance number 5.74.1 on second reading.
Second. Motion by John and a second by Josh. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. And look, we get a twofer. Next one is item C, ordinance number 5.06.391, 39.1 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance amending Title VII, the Parker Municipal Code authorizing the community service offer, officer to remove or impound abandoned motor vehicles on public property. Sure enough, it says, "Doreen Jokerst." One more time, right there.
Exciting, two for two.
Doreen, normally, I mean, this is just, this is...
It's an exciting night.
Epic, epic night.
Take a photo.
Tell us, Doreen.
Um, this is additional provisions that now would allow community service officers to impound and tow motor vehicles, where right now it's only a commission officer that can do that, and that would be for abandoned vehicles on, uh, public property.
Okay. Counsel, any questions?
What is a community service officer?
They wear a certain colored shirt?
Yeah.
They smile real big. Can you give, just, just for the sake of our legend friends here, def, how is it, how is a vehicle determined to be abandoned? Can you just walk up to like a sweet old, you know, Corvette and be like, man, it hasn't moved in a few minutes, I think it's abandoned?
That's right.
And Ryan, they can go, ah, that's mine, I'm impounding it. I mean, like, how do you define, what's the definition of abandon, of abandoned?
So if the vehicle hasn't moved within 48 hours, and we also have inoperable vehicles, if it's up on blocks, expired plates after a certain amount of time, we tag those vehicles to let the owners know and provide education of what they need to do to come in compliance, and then if a certain time period has passed and they have not come into compliance, then the vehicle is inoperable or abandoned and can be towed off a public roadway.
Are Jeep owners exempt because they break down?
Oh, of course it's gotta come. Please, stop it. He only wishes. So, as a point of process, just for, again, for legend to know, once it's been determined abandoned and it's been issued to be towed and it's towed away, what happens at that point to the vehicle?
Uh, so the vehicle, uh, after we make, uh, notice and we put a vehicle, an abandoned vehicle tag on the vehicle, it gets towed to one of the, uh, local impound lots here in the town of Parker, and then usually what happens is the owner comes home and realizes that their vehicle's not there. It's all been registered through dispatch and through CCIC, so they call and we tell them exactly where it is and the reason for it, and obviously they would have known that with proper notice. When we provide notice, too, we clear the plate to see if it's, uh, registered to any of the homes, and obviously we try to make contact with the owner to explain exactly what's going on, so that notice is made to them in person as well.
Sweet chicken, sounds good, thank you very much. And, uh, since this is a public hearing, we'll open it up for public comment at 7:58 PM. Kids, any of you guys ever have your car towed? Abandoned? No? You're not gonna admit it in front of all your friends. John Fusa in the back, he's had his, but he's from New Jersey, he's had...
That's right.
That's a whole different story back there, so...
Don't open the trunk.
Don't open the trunk once it gets towed.